There will be an artist's reception for the current Town Hall Walls exhibits, some of which you will see on the wall in this room. They feature watercolors by Judy Mason, paintings by Natalia Sheperovski, and photographs by Jean Stringham. Some are here, some are downstairs in rooms 103 and 111. Is that right? Anyway, there'll be a reception from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. on Friday evening where you get to meet the artists. And just a reminder, the deadline for applicants for the Spring Town Hall Walls exhibit is December 14th. You can get forms and details from the Brookline Council for the Commission for the Arts website, and you can also find out by calling (617) 730-2135. Just also, repeat reminders, there will be a holiday marketplace again with pop-up vendors at Two Brookline Place in Brookline Village on Saturday from noon until 5:00 p.m. And the Winter Farmers Market will continue on Sundays from noon to 5:00 p.m. in the Arcade Building in Coolidge Corner. Any additional comments from members of the board?
No, I just want to say that, because I don't think we've commented on it since it's happened, but I was in Brookline Village on first light.
Oh, yes.
It seemed like a lively scene. So, that was very good.
Good. And I notice if you look around town, there are all kinds of nice lit-up trees, which is, to me at least, the really insignificant thing. Get the lights back on, folks. It's too dark at 4:00 p.m. So, anyway. All right. Moving on to our miscellaneous calendar, are there any corrections or changes to the minutes?
I have some.
Okay. I'll pass them in. Then I move, and we had already agreed, to corrections for the minutes from November 20th, so these are the minutes from November 26th. So I will move that we approve the minutes from November 20th and November 26th as amended. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Washinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And moving on to our miscellaneous items. Just make sure I've got the right calendar in front of me. We have some contracts. First wastewater master plan update, and I wonder if we're going to have anybody here to comment about that.
Maybe, I actually have some questions, so could we move ahead?
Yeah, we can.
Maybe Mr. Kletner can tell us about the bicycle issue, and then we can come back to...
Are you also holding the transportation improvements at the Hammond Street Fire Station number six? That's the second miscellaneous.
Yeah, I do have some...
You have questions about that one, too?
I do have some questions about that one.
All right. Then we'll skip to item D, and perhaps either Selectman Washinsky or Mr. Kletner would tell us the status of this. Yes, Mr. Viola.
Well, yeah, I asked Joe if he could come up and clarify. I'll give you just the very thumbnail sketch, and that is that you may have read that City of Cambridge would like to experiment with winter operation of the subway system. The original agreement did not contemplate that, and so obviously if there's revenues that are accruing in the winter for operation, the allocation of those revenues need to be adjusted, and that's essentially what the amendment reflects. But perhaps Joe could clarify.
Sorry. Mr. Viola.
Mr. Kletner is correct, obviously, and in addition to that, it just, the amendment gets into certain aspects of expenses and how they're borne exclusively by Cambridge as part of its winter operations of the bike-share system. Just to be, an update, is all four communities and all the bike-share have reviewed and agreed to this amendment. The communities are supportive of Cambridge and its venture, and it'll be good to see whether or not the bike-share system's viable as a winter operation.
In the winter time, yeah, right. Is there any opportunity for other communities to kind of test the waters in addition to Cambridge? I guess our equipment's all going to be taken away, though, right?
Our equipment, as of yesterday, is actually off the street.
Is gone, yeah.
And Boston's in the process of taking their systems, and Somerville as well. So, none of the other communities are choosing to participate. Cambridge is the sole key to operation.
Right. So then we observe them closely and find out how successful it is.
Exactly.
Yeah, I've got to say, I was wondering about this because I see that in their agreement, they were having, Alta was supposed to come along and pick up the bicycles before a major snow event, if possible, but it seems to me that in the last, I don't know how many years, we've had a fair amount of snow every winter, and to try to deal with those bicycles out there, and then plows kind of hit them, and, you know, there's damage, and so on and so on.
The bicycle racks?
Well, but, you know, that, I mean, if, when do you put them back after a major snow event? I mean, sometimes we have, you know, kind of, it starts snowing, and then it just keeps going, so. I'm happy, is basically what I'm saying, I'm happy to let Cambridge try this out and see how it works before we get into some of those issues with the plowing and everything.
Right.
Selectman Washinsky?
I also think that we're dependent on Boston doing it, because I think a lot of our trips either start in Boston, come over, or start in Brookline and go over to Boston, more so than the other municipalities. So, it makes absolutely no sense for us to be doing it alone, as Cambridge is, but I'm very happy to let Cambridge try it out.
Try it out, okay. All right. Well, we'll stay tuned and see what happens. Then I move that we approve an amendment to the Regional Hubway Bike Share Agreement to accommodate a winter trial operation in the city of Cambridge. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Washinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ditto, are you going to tell us about wastewater master plan? And Hammond Street improvements?
Sorry for being late. Okay, the first one on the agenda is the approval of a contract for wastewater master plan update, and infiltration inflow analysis, and ultimately a sewer system rehab contract. And this is focusing on what we call NI Area 9, 10, and 11. And NI stands for Nut Island, in case you care to know. And this project is funded through the State Revolving Fund, which is administered by the MWRA, and it's a 45% grant, 55% zero interest loan. And just to give you an idea, we started this program up in the Chestnut Hill area, rehabbing the sewer mains in that part of town, and now we're working our way down to, this contract actually is, will be the north side of Beacon Street from Cory Road down to Winchester. So that's the area that we'll be focusing on doing some evaluation work.
Okay. And out of curiosity, are there areas, are there, are you aware of any particular concerns in that section?
This contract starts out with doing video of areas where have the live sewer mains, where if they do fail, they could be catastrophic. So what we do is we prioritize them in size and in location. So if we have an 18-inch water main on Beacon Street, I mean sewer main on Beacon Street, we're going to look at that first. So we video all the mains in priority order, and then based on that, results of the video, we determine whether there is excessive infiltration into the pipe, that's groundwater that gets through the cracks in the pipes, or if there are any visual structural deficiencies in the pipe which should be corrected.
Okay. Selectman Daley?
Yeah, I had a question, because it, since this was concerning the wastewater master plan, is there, there was, I was recently hearing something about Willow Pond. Is that all sorted out?
Willow Pond, there, we're still working on that. That's a DEP hazardous waste site.
Right.
And we're working at getting a cleanup program in place for that.
Okay, so that hasn't happened yet.
No.
Are we, is any wastewater going into Willow Pond?
No.
That should not be?
No.
No?
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Ditto? Then I move that we award and execute contract number PW 14-22, wastewater master plan update, infiltration and inflow investigation, and sewer system rehabilitation, in the amount of $152,085. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Washinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay. And the next item, Mr. Ditto, can you tell us about the extra work order?
Sure.
At the Hammond Street Transportation Improvements?
Yes, this was a upgrade of the traffic signal at Hammond Street Fire Station number six, and we completely did the traffic signals over there. And in installing, in case you haven't been by, I'm sure you have, but there's a new mast arm up there, and that takes a foundation that's about that wide and about this deep. And where we thought we could put the foundation, there was electric high-voltage lines that ran right through the, where we proposed to put that. So we had to do some test-pitting to find out where we could fit it, and so this was all a result of that investigation.
So it's already been done, the work?
Yeah, this actually finalized that contract and closes it out.
Okay. All right. Since we're talking about traffic circles, what do we know about the status at Putterham? Are people getting around it now, these days?
The Horace James.
Sorry, Horace James, right.
Yeah, as far as I know, it's worked very well. We haven't heard any complaints.
Well, it still has some weird markings.
Mm-hmm. It does. It does. They're different, but the biggest...
You know, I do not believe that anyone looks at a squiggle that goes all the way around, that seems to be telling you to go the wrong way around the circle, and thinks, oh, yeah, that means something different. I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, there's some universal signals, and I don't think those are on that list.
Well, they are big to different. Anyway, the problem area was...
I've driven in a lot of countries, and a lot of places in this country, and I've never seen that stuff before.
I saw one in Nut Island last week.
Oh, yes.
One place.
But the real problem area was the West Roxbury Parkway coming in from Grove Street, and that was backing up quite a bit, almost to the point where it was intersecting, well, it was intersecting with Newton Street, and that has seemed to have gone away. So we're pretty happy with that.
All right.
But I was, to get back to Horace James for a minute, I was there not too long ago, and there was a long, long line of traffic from La Grange, I guess it was, trying to get into the circle.
Right.
I mean, way longer than anything I saw prior to them fixing, I'll use quotation marks when I say fixing, that circle.
Yeah, that historically has been backing up at least as far, almost to the town line. That and Newton Street, not as bad, but Newton Street went as far back as Princeton Road, and that was pretty much what we noticed before we started that construction.
Well, I mean, I thought we were going to reach out to the state and ask them to take a look at this.
As far as doing a pre and post investigation?
Well, yeah, to see if this, I mean, I don't think this is the best they can do, honestly.
Well, we can ask them.
Yeah. I mean, I know Andy sent a letter.
He did.
And was there any response to that?
No, no, we're not talking about Horace James. We're on a side.
No, no.
We've asked, yes, we are talking about it.
About Horace James.
It's not a vote we're taking. We just happened to have Mr. Ditto present, and we're able to ask some questions. Yeah.
There have been changes at Horace James. Have you spoken about those?
Yes.
Since, since...
Since the letter?
Since the letter, yeah.
Okay.
The, and I apologize for being late. If you remember, when we had the hearing here with regard to Horace James, there were a couple of issues that were raised, but the most severe backup was the backup along the parkway leading into the circle, and actually, I guess that it was backed up to Newton Street, backed up about 1,000 feet to Newton Street. There were also backups on La Grange. And one of the solutions that I suggested was having a dedicated exit ramp off of the parkway onto Hammond Street northbound. Andy Papasturgen wrote the letter to the state. Subsequently, the engineering department here drew up plans for that, to create that exit lane directly, that dedicated exit lane directly onto Hammond Street, and the engineering department here got permission from the state to do that. And the town actually implemented that change. Correct?
Correct.
So now, instead of there being two lanes leading from the park, essentially as you go past the entrance to the golf course, there were two lanes and the bulbout that basically forced everybody, no matter what direction they were going, into those two lanes. There is now a lane that allows traffic, that wants to head onto Hammond Street to go unimpeded. There are basically three lanes that lead into the circle. One of those allows traffic to go unimpeded onto Hammond Street without waiting for the traffic that's trying to go across Horace James Circle. My understanding is that that has made a significant difference, and I also reverse-commute past that in the morning on my way to school, and I have not seen backups on the parkway similar to what there were before.
Correct.
I don't know whether you've measured it, but, I mean, I actually, I'm sort of pleased that the suggestion worked, and I also give a great deal of credit to the town DPW and Engineering Department for basically just doing, doing the plans for that and getting permission from the state to do it, and basically addressing the issue on our own.
Okay.
Any comments?
So that's an update on Horace James.
Yep, you hit the nail right on the head. We prepared the plans according to the MUTCD standards, which is what the DCR requested of us. We forwarded them to them, and they said, fine, these look like they meet all the requirements. Go ahead and move ahead. So we did.
Now, I, that does leave the question of La Grange Street, and, you know, I know that Selectman Goldstein specifically raised the question of traffic from La Grange trying to get around the circle, essentially being forced into one lane to make that. I don't, you know, as I go around the circle again in the morning, there do seem to be backups on La Grange. I don't know how serious they are, you know, I don't go that route, and I don't know whether there's a potential fix for that.
So, has there been any official monitoring or even unofficial monitoring since those changes were done?
I would say at best they were unofficial by the DPW, and that was just a case of riding by during the peak hour and seeing if there was any backup. And we hadn't noticed it for two days in a row. Let it go, and if we got any complaints, we'd address them.
Okay. And how long have the changes actually been on the ground?
I'd say about two weeks, maybe?
Two weeks, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Well, maybe it'd be nice to have somebody officially from the Transportation Department go out and just do some rush hour monitoring to see whether it's been effective.
We can do that.
After two weeks, people have maybe had enough time to figure it out that it's different. Okay, back to our original item, which is to approve the extra work order. I move that we approve extra work order number one in the amount of $1,578.33 in connection with contract number PW 12-16, Transportation Improvements Project, Hammond Street at Fire Station number six. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Binka, are you abstaining? Are you going to vote?
I've actually read the papers. I'll vote aye on it.
Okay. Selectman Binka says aye. Selectman Washinsky?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ditto. Now we have a request for extended hours at the Fine Ripe Grill for one night, December 6th, from 11:00 p.m. until midnight. Are there any questions about that? If not, then I will propose that we approve E, F, G, and H, which all have to do with licensing and hours. I move that we approve the request of Fine Ripe Grill, holder of a seasonal all kinds alcoholic beverage license as a common victualler, for an extension of hours on December 6th, 2013, from 11:00 p.m. until midnight. I move that we approve the application of Boston University Metropolitan College for a temporary wine and malt beverage license for an event on December 17th, 2013. I move that we grant a temporary wine and malt beverage license to Brookline Access Television on December 5th, from 5:30 p.m. until 8:30 p.m. And I move that we grant a permit to serve wine and beer, non-sales, to the Lars Anderson Auto Museum on December 19th, from 5:30 p.m. until 10:30 p.m. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Binka?
Aye.
Selectman Washinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay. I believe now we can move to the main calendar items. And the first is transfer of land at Carrigan Place, and I know, Selectman Binka, you had some questions about this, and I don't know if we were able to address them.
I believe...
So, Mr. Martineau, are you aware of the issues that were raised in the language by Selectman Binka?
Yes, I am.
Oh, okay.
And Special Town Counsel.
Actually, there's somebody there who's, okay, all right, good.
Hi.
I mean, you're just not the attorney, that's all. I apologize.
Played one on TV.
Okay.
Special Town Counsel will address Selectman Binka's issues that were brought up.
Very good. Then we may proceed, now that I know we have all of our people assembled. Go ahead.
Andy Martino, Economic Development Planner for the town, pleased to come before you tonight with a proposal for limited-service hotel at the 111 Boylston Street site, also known as Red Cab. It's an exciting project for EDAB, something that's been a long time coming, and we think it's going to have some great benefits for the town in the way of additional tax revenues, and also hopefully serves as a catalyst for redevelopment along the Route 9 corridor. The developer's been extremely responsive to residents abutters during the entire process, going back to their first meeting in June. As a result, they've had a very successful and positive DAT review process, working hand and glove with members of the DAT and the planning board to put forth a great project that is poised to receive all their permits this Thursday at the Zoning Board of Appeals hearing. So we're here tonight to take care of, hopefully, another important step in the development process, which is the transfer of a small town-owned parcel at the end of Carrigan Place. So you have in your packets before you tonight some documents pertaining to that transfer, including a tax agreement, purchase and sale agreement, which includes several supplement documents, and deed to the parcel. So with that, I'll turn it over to Special Town Counsel Jennifer DePosel-Gilberg to walk you through the particulars of those documents.
So, welcome back.
Thank you. It's wonderful to be here.
You must have missed us on Tuesday night.
Can't stay away.
I really did, actually, and I even said, oh, this is going to be my first time not at town meeting. This is terrible. I actually missed town meeting, and someone over in a corner office over there said, you're crazy. But, no, pleased to be here, a special town counsel. So just a bit of a history on this site. I think it was back in 2005, 2006 that we started talking about what was going to happen to that site and how it could be developed for both in the best interest of the town and also to satisfy neighbors, and if there's any site in town that you could call blighted, that's really been it, and it's been an eyesore and a source of much contention. But in '07, we went to town meeting to get authorization for the Board of Selectmen to sign a deed transferring a very small parcel of land, 502 square feet, which abuts actually the train tracks, and it sits to the east of Carrigan Place, which is a private way, and to the west, you have a three-family house there, and then you have the bridge, that Davis Path, and the bridge that goes over to White Place, and then, of course, you have the former Red Cab site at 111 Boylston, which is the large site. And after that in '07, we had a developer onboard, Leggett McCall, who was going to develop that property into a combination medical office and commercial space on the bottom, and unfortunately, due to both litigation after the ZBA approval, as well as the economy tanking in '09, they lost their tenant, and that deal unfortunately fell through. And then we had another developer come a couple of years later, GLC, who wanted to also develop the site, and unfortunately, that didn't pan out. Again, there was litigation involving a different abutter, and unfortunately, that didn't go through. And now, and here with me this evening is the attorney for Claremont Suites LLC, who intends to operate this as a Hilton hotel, and he is here tonight. Mel Schuman is also a Brookline resident and very familiar with the site, so we have worked together very well. I'm very hopeful that this is the final developer. Tomorrow, no, not tomorrow, Thursday evening will be the second night of hearings before the Zoning Board of Appeals. There has been no opposition, and everybody has worked really well together with the design advisory team to make modifications, and I have to give credit to Selectman Binka and Kara Bruton and their team on the zoning committee that went back and changed the zoning to include a step-back provision to help with mitigation for the White Place neighbors with respect to the height and the bulk and the massing, visual massing of the building. So it's been wonderful. We have three documents that need to be both approved and signed by you tonight, and I'll go through them, and I'll also speak to Selectman Binka's concerns, all of which have been addressed. There was one remaining concern, Selectman Binka, with respect to adding language in the deed. There was a concern that the title company would raise a red flag for the title company, but Mr. Schuman is confident that that won't be an issue. So I actually have a new deed which has a provision which states, references made to an agreement, and this is the tax certainty agreement, by and between Claremont Brookline Suites LLC and the town of Brookline dated December 3rd, should you approve it, which is recorded here with the tax agreement. By acceptance and recording of this deed, the grantee acknowledges and accepts the tax agreement and agrees that the same shall be binding and enforceable against the grantee in accordance with its terms. So that will be actually in the deed now. The tax agreement was going to be recorded simultaneously with the deed. This is an added assurance that anyone looking at this deed will know to look a bit further for the second document, which is what we're calling a tax certainty agreement. And that was, I like to take credit for that because it was sort of a think-outside-the-box kind of agreement. With any new development, there's always a concern that it may in the future be used for tax-exempt use, and we now have an agreement that will also be recorded in the chain of title, which requires that exact language to apply to all successes and assigns in the deeds if they should transfer the premises or any portion thereof. So, Mr. Schuman doesn't have any concern that it's not going to be used for a hotel, that it will be a Hilton for many years, but there's never, there's never any guarantee of that, and colleges seem to be looking for dorms and looking for more facilities, and more and more pushing towards Brookline. We are surrounded by them, and in fact, the Yard Institute and other universities and schools are coming, actually within Brookline. So, we have that agreement. And then there is the purchase and sale agreement, which I want to highlight a couple of things in the purchase and sale agreement. All of these documents will be held in escrow, and the purchase and sale agreement also has the vote from the 2007 town meeting that authorizes the board to convey the property. The minimum price in that vote is $85,000. It had to be bid in accordance with Chapter 30B, again, for the third time, which it was, and Claremont Suites was the only responsive proposal. There's $5,000 deposit, and the total price for this parcel is $85,000. Part of the escrow provisions is that the deed will not be released until four things happen. Number one, a building permit is issued for the parcel. Number one, a building permit is issued for the project, and the project is that which a special permit was recently applied for, so that's clear in there. And then, there's a release and indemnity with respect to any environmental concerns at the site. And in speaking with special counsel who handles environmental matters for the town, gentleman by the name of Jeff Roloffs, who used to be at Foley-Hoag and now is on his own in Newbury Pool with several other attorneys, I had him review all the documents, and so we have a release and indemnity with respect to any issues. Peter Diddo doesn't believe there is or will be any concerns. There is some environmental concerns, but what we've said is that the construction loan has to cover any cleanup that would be required, and before the deed will be released from escrow, they have to have their construction loan in a sufficient amount to cover all of that. And then, all of the parcels need to be either acquired prior to or at the time of the closing and release of the escrow, and also that the tax agreement will have to be simultaneously recorded. And so, that's a bit of the history, the purchase and sale. Let me go over, so I went over one of your concerns, Selectman Binka, and then you had three points that you wanted clarified, and I was able to make, they were all in the tax agreement, and so I was able to make those changes and actually get the new agreement to the Board of Assessors, who met today at 4:00, and they had no issue and approved it and signed it. So, I think Kate has the ink on the paper with the copy, and I just want to go through those changes. So, Selectman Binka, you wanted to make clear that in the second whereas clause to the agreement, which now, the actual legal description in Exhibit A of the premises already included the 502-square-foot parcel, and now, the second whereas clause specifically includes it in the definition of premises.
Okay.
So, we captured that. And then, your second point was in paragraph number two, to make it clear that the voluntary annual payments to the town, should this ever be tax exempt, applied to the premises or any portion thereof that may be used for a non-exempt purpose. So, I did clarify that in paragraph one, and then in paragraph three, you had requested that we add the following line with respect to, well, two things with respect to termination. Number one, if there should be any laws that materially change, that materially affect, adversely affect either party, that party seeking termination, that would be the party seeking termination. If a law were changed, a tax law that adversely impacted either party, they could seek termination of the agreement. But, we also added a line that both parties agree that, should it seek such termination, it shall prior to seeking termination confer in good faith with the other party in an attempt to amend or otherwise renegotiate the terms of this agreement in order to meet its original intent and material benefits. And I thank Selectman Binka, I think that was a great idea to add that. So, sit down, if there are laws that change that someone wants to get out of this agreement, sit down and see if you can amend it or renegotiate the terms so that the original intent could still be met.
Yeah.
So, those have been addressed, and-
My, well, my concern there was that, as drafted, the language basically said that if there was any change in law or regulation that had an adverse effect on either party, materially adverse effect on either party, even the other party could terminate. For example, if, for some reason, there was an adverse effect on the town, that would allow Claremont to terminate the agreement, which didn't make a lot of sense. So, I think, as I understand it, you're addressing that, I haven't seen the new language yet, but basically, this concept would apply to the party that was adversely affected, would be able to seek termination. And then, but beyond that, I was hoping that there would be language that would, I don't know, if conferring in good faith in an effort gets exactly to where I want to get, or whether there, whether we could make the language stronger than that. Because this agreement really, Claremont is going to have the property, and will be building, and this agreement, over the long term, really benefits the town. It's not something that benefits Claremont in any way. So, I was a bit concerned about the whole concept of the agreement being terminable, and wondering what sort of circumstances that would be likely to occur in, or that could conceivably, what could conceivably cause that to occur, and was hoping that if there was some adverse impact, the essence of this agreement would be incumbent, or the parties would be required to renegotiate to accomplish the purposes of this agreement, not just to confer in good faith, but actually to-
To be required to amend it?
Yeah, to try to accomplish the purposes and the intent. I'm wondering if that, and I know counsel for Claremont is here, hi, Mel, you understand my issue, and you understand my issue.
I do, but I think as drafted, with the new language by Jennifer-
You might want to come to the mic.
Would you mind coming over to the microphone, because there are people watching, or will see this video, and you will not be visible unless you're there.
I'm happy to do that. I think as redrafted, it does more than just say confer, because the language says, let me just find it here, "Confer in good faith in an attempt to amend or otherwise renegotiate the terms in order to meet its original intent."
What about to confer in good faith to amend? Just take out "in the attempt."
I mean, I wouldn't have a problem with that.
That's fine, to that-
Good, sold.
Okay, good.
Sold.
No problem at all, and I will run that by Gary McCabe, I don't think that will be an issue with the Board of Assessors. Selectman Daley?
Yeah, I had a thought today, and I realize I should have had this thought long, long ago in the process, but it was relating, again, to the tax certainty thing, and I appreciate your thinking outside the box there, but it occurred to me that maybe if we retained ownership of the property but gave somebody a 99-year lease, that we might have more control, you know, as it changes hands over the years, to make sure that it, you know, because we would be, we would get a lease payment, and so, and so you wouldn't even need to have a big argument about whether they have to pay us taxes or not, they would continue to have to pay us a lease payment. So, have you thought of that?
Yeah, we did think of that, and I'm not sure we could have got, received a lease payment for a 500-square-foot piece, because there were efforts made by developers to not use that piece, and we didn't want to get cut out of the loop. So, we did think about that back in '06, '07, and that's my memory of why we didn't go that route.
Okay. Are there questions for Ms. Gilbert?
Yeah.
No?
No, I, you know, the one advantage, obviously, is that we had with the ownership of this paltry 500-square-foot parcel, was that we had an easement from that parcel to Route 9. So, you know, it would have made, it would have made the kind of development that's being proposed very difficult-
Absolutely.
-if we had retained ownership of that parcel and retained that easement. Now, we could have-
Excellent point, yes, yes.
I just, if I could go over the vote, there was a draft vote in the memorandum, but I want to refine it a bit, and so, really, what the planning department and what we're asking for this evening are for four separate items. So, it would be voted to, and I'll give this to Kate McGilvray in a moment, approve and execute a deed transferring the town-owned parcel of land at Carrigan Place, consisting of approximately 502 square feet, et cetera. And number two would be to approve and execute the purchase and sale agreement related to the transfer of the land. Number three, which will be added, is to approve and execute an agreement with respect to the tax certainty of the premises. And then, four would be to authorize the town administrator, Mel Klechner, to execute and deliver any affidavit, votes, or other standard forms that may be requested by the title company to issue its policy of insurance and effectuate the transfer of the land, provided that the same has been reviewed by town council. So, with that, if I could give the new deed, so that you're signing the correct deed with the language referencing the tax agreement, I just want to make sure that you have that.
Selectman Washinsky?
Before we get into the formal votes, I just want to say how excited I am, and I know a lot of the neighbors are, about this development. It's been a long time coming, and I think it's great, and to have a development there, given the history, without any opposition by abutters is amazing. So, it speaks to the quality of what's going on. And when do we expect construction to start?
Well, unlike the tax certainty agreement, there's never any certainty in these questions, but the hope is that sometime in the spring, it'll be able to get underway, and assuming that the economy remains strong and things go as planned, that I think that's realistic.
While you're up there, I know in earlier discussions, there's been some question raised about whether the Davis-Path connection could be repaired and improved as a result of all of this construction that I know will take place and further disrupt it over a temporary time. Has that been discussed with you at all?
Well, there's a requirement, actually, in the Davis-Path zoning-
Yeah.
-that a portion, is it 1%? Of the hard construction costs need to be devoted either to improvements to Davis-Path or the playground. So, working with the Parks Department, the developer will determine how best to spend that money.
So, we can anticipate that that will, in fact, get attended.
I think that it will, yes.
Okay. Selectman Daley, you were asking-
Yeah, no, my question was, I think that you were talking about a limited service hotel, but-
Yes.
I do hope people will be able to get breakfast there, because-
Well, it's really, as a limited service hotel-
Yeah.
-it has food service, but very limited for the guests of the hotel, so it will not have an operational restaurant that will be for people outside of the hotel.
Right, but I mean, that's, it's not, you'd have to walk quite a ways to get your breakfast.
The people who are staying there will have breakfast.
Okay, good.
Included, yes.
And as I understand it, perhaps a happy hour also.
We shall sleep. Is that of particular interest to you?
I don't know, I don't know, but-
That's to be discussed.
To be discussed, right.
Not part of this document.
To be determined.
And that, in some respects, goes back to the bill that is now pending on behalf of the town-
Right.
-before the legislature-
Right.
-with regard to liquor licenses.
So, are we ready?
Well, if we're going to put in our druthers, I like afternoon tea. I think any establishment that has afternoon tea is okay with me.
I will let my client know.
Yes, all right.
I actually would like to make a comment. This really is the fruition of a lot of work that was put on, put in by the Red Cab Committee, and I'm, I jotted down some names, but I'm not going to name names, because I'm sure that I would omit somebody on that committee. But, the concept that the Red Cab Committee came up with, and it wasn't mine, the architects on the committee came up with this idea of a sky plane zoning that essentially stepped the building back, or decreased the height of the building as it approached the abutting residential properties to the rear of the building, and put more of the mass of the building on the Route 9 side in order to reduce the impact on the nearest residential buildings. And it was just a wonderful idea, and the developer, the development team, has actually gone beyond that. In, I mean, we conceived of a block, a mass behind, and the development team has actually, the architect for the developer has conceived of a design that has three projections coming out, to basically break up the mass of that building in the back that faces the residential properties. So, this, I think one reason that there is not opposition to this is because there's been a lot of hard work and a lot of creativity and a lot of talent on the part of volunteers in the town who served on the Red Cab Committee, and also really work in good faith on the part of the development team here. So, it is, I think, really the fruition of all that work and a way to address what has been a blighted sight in our midst. I know Kara is-
She has-
Just have the names, and so, Dick Binka chaired the committee, and we had Charles Baker, John Bassett, David England, Steve Hyken, Angela Hyatt, Ken Lewis, Sergio Madiglioni, Charles Osborne, Linda Pelkey, Dan Saltzman, Paul Sainer, and Bill Schwartz, so-
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, are we now ready to take this vote? I have to say, just sort of agreeing with my colleagues, that this is a great project, and I'm sorry that it's taken such a long time, but on the other hand, it's really, really nice to have a good result, and one that we will be very pleased with when we see it all completed, so I guess maybe it was worth it.
With that hotel tax, best of all possible worlds, from my viewpoint.
Sure, absolutely. All right, I will read out the votes from the memo, but I'm going to ask Ms. Gilbert to give us number three, which I don't have in writing, okay, when we get to it.
She gave it to Kate.
Oh, well, all right, fine. So, but we're going to take four different votes, which requires four different readings. The first vote is to approve and execute a deed transferring a town-owned parcel of land at Carrigan Place to Claremont Brookline Suites LLC, consisting of approximately 502 square feet, plus or minus, as authorized by the vote at the November 14th, 2007 Special Town Meeting. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Binka?
Aye.
Selectman Washinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Second, to approve and execute the purchase and sale agreement related to the transfer of the land, and, all right, that's the second vote. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Binka?
Aye.
Selectman Washinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And now-
Yes, the third proposed vote is to approve and execute an agreement with respect to tax certainty for the premises.
All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Binka?
Aye.
Selectman Washinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And finally, to authorize the town administrator, Mel Klechner, to execute and deliver any affidavit, votes, or other standard forms that may be reasonably requested by the title company to issue the policy of insurance and to effectuate the transfer of the land, provided that the same have been reviewed by Special Town Council. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Binka?
Aye.
Selectman Washinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck, and may your construction contracts be favorable. We have a brief personnel item. Ms. Dobek can't be here tonight, but I frankly see no objection to moving ahead with this unless there's some member who wishes to hold it.
Nope, nope.
Okay, then I move that we approve a vacancy in the position of Assistant Home Care Coordinator, T1, at the Council on Aging Department. Actually, maybe it's T3, if I look at the form in my packet. Well, maybe we omit that and just say-
Just take out the parenthetical.
Yeah, take out the T1, and just say, approve a vacancy in the position of Assistant Home Care Coordinator in the Council on Aging Department. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Binka?
Aye.
Selectman Washinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And the next item is a candidate for the Brookline Access Television Board, Ms. Ford? Welcome, would you just come over to the microphone?
Sure.
We, we're being videoed, so we need you there in order for you to be seen and heard.
By Brookline Access Television.
By Brookline Access Television, right.
Your future, right, anyway.
Great.
So, welcome, and please tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in this.
Sure, I have-
Sure. I have been in primarily marketing and business development for over 20 years, and feel that I can bring a pretty strong experience and background to the board on Brookline Access TV, as we're trying to kind of move from being a hidden gem to being much better known as a resource, particularly in the area of educating, you know, our young people in our community on how they can really be part of the interactive revolution and have access to media and create their own media. It's a great group of people, it's a great resource, you know, I think it's a hidden resource for the town, so I've been excited about working with them.
And we are very pleased with the way BAT has been able to work out a partnership with the high school. I think the kids love it, but you probably know that.
Yeah.
Okay. Some questions for Ms. Ford? Yes, Selectman Daley?
Yeah, it was interesting, because you mentioned, I don't know, all the different forms of media out there now. And I think that almost presents a challenge, you know, and people have their little screen, and you can get wonderful things on it. And so it makes it hard, I think, for a local access cable channel to compete in terms of, you know, production value and stuff like that. I don't know what your thoughts are on that.
I think it's a great question. There was a time when producing media meant having a really expensive camera and, you know, really high-end equipment and the crew and filming. And there's certainly an audience for that, and a group of people that really rely on Brookline Access as a place to be able to do that and create film and documentaries and amazing educational programs, you know, that are being produced right here in this community. But a large part of what we've been doing is also educating, you know, lay people, people like myself, who don't have necessarily, you know, professional background or expertise in media, but teaching people how they can do filming on small screens, you know, everything from moms who want to make great videos of their families, to kids that want to kind of, you know, foster an interest in producing their own media, whether it be on a high-end camera or on an iPhone. So the technique on how to do that differs by device, but the skills, the, you know, aptitude for that, and I think fostering an interest in that is something, you know, that we're really well-served to do. Media's becoming, if not, you know, it's becoming even more and more interesting to the broader community over time. So I feel like we actually hold a really great set of resources to help people evolve their knowledge.
Any other questions for Ms. Ford?
I actually was just curious about what care.com does.
Sure. Care.com, my employer, we're the largest online destination for finding care in the world. So here in the U.S., we have over eight million members, primarily families looking for caregivers, like full-time nannies, babysitters, increasingly elder and senior caregivers, tutors, housekeepers, pet sitters, and helping people not only find high-quality care, but background check, manage, increasingly services to help people pay for care more conveniently. And we're based in Wallfam, not too far away.
One of the things I know about it is that, unlike sort of Craigslist, these are folks who've been carefully reviewed and vetted and have a high level of confidence.
Yes, absolutely. There's a really large safety operation that kind of happens behind the scenes to present a really high-quality network of providers. We also, though, feel that the care providers are just as much our constituents as families and parents who are seeking care. So skills training, really, you know, I'd say at the highest level, the company's goal is to professionalize the care industry and create really positive relationships between families and caregivers.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, not a question, but a comment. We, there are not vacancies right now, according to what we have in front of us. And I'm just curious as to whether there is a cap on the...
I don't know. What I do know is that, and Ms. Ford may be aware of this as well, there's a review of the bylaws underway right now, and anticipation in the process of the next cable contract, that there will be changes at the board level, and therefore, it is quite possible that they can expand the number of members. So I don't know for sure, and I don't know whether all of the incumbents want to be reappointed, even.
Right, right.
I believe we do have vacancies currently.
Yeah. My understanding, my informal understanding was that there would be a vacancy, but the document that we have before us just shows the current members and their terms.
Okay.
So it doesn't necessarily make that clear.
I see.
But I do have the impression you were encouraged. I think they knew there was a vacancy.
I think it's wonderful that you were encouraged, but I just wanted to note that
Understandable.
What we have in front of us doesn't indicate that...
We're not going to make the appointment tonight, I can tell you that.
Is there a follow-up action from...
We'll proceed.
You don't want to run somebody over.
Don't worry about this. We'll make sure that it's cleared up.
No, I wouldn't do that.
Well, I hope we can find a slot for you, because I'm looking forward to Brookline's Funniest Home Videos or something like that.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's a great idea. We have a lot of ideas percolating. Thank you.
Well, what I can say is that a couple of years ago, my family took some eight-millimeter film that were, films that were made by my kid's grandfather, that were family things that we had actually transferred to CD and then distributed to the family. And frankly, if we had had the devices that are around today, we wouldn't have needed to do that. So the fact that you may be in a position to help train people to record these wonderful things that used to take a camera and film and processing, and we're really, really fortunate that someone in the family had access to that and was willing to do it. But now anybody could theoretically, so it's a great idea.
Exactly. A great way to archive family history.
Yeah. But just, you're speaking of that, makes me think that it might be, it might be interesting. I would watch. If you could team up with, say, the Preservation Commission or something, and go to some of these homes that are on the National Registry.
Might be interesting.
You know, it'd be kind of interesting, you know, the history and the architecture and whatever. And I think it'd be kind of a fun show to watch.
Well, I hate to tell family anecdotes, but I've got one more, which kind of fits into that. And that is that my...
We just had a family holiday, I think.
Oh, yeah, right. Well, it sort of comes up. But my fourth-grade great niece just did a history of the house that she lives in, her family lives in. And she researched when it was built, and she made a little video that went along with it. I didn't think about this as a possibility, but it's actually just the kind of thing you're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's sort of exciting. All right, enough. Thank you very much for your interest. We're not taking a vote tonight, but you will hear from us, and we will definitely sort out the question of vacancies between now and then. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We are now at the moment when we can open a public hearing on a grant of locations in Star. Mr. Ditto. We want to dig some more holes, I gather.
I'd like it easy so you can visualize.
Ah, great. Very helpful.
Sort of a technical question, I guess. Are there any seasonal temperature issues around this kind of project that limits when the work can be done?
There are. If you approve this grant of location, we won't give permits until first week in April.
Ah, I see. Okay, so this work is, will be in the spring?
Yes.
Okay. You have the floor, Mr. Ditto, and your associate from InStar is, just identify yourself for the record, please.
Sheila Gillis.
Thank you, Ms. Gillis.
Welcome back.
Yeah, we should have your name memorized at this point.
We have your own plaque.
Yeah.
InStar is looking for four sets of grants of location here. The first one's Edge Hill Road. It's approximately 200, I mean, 170 feet of cable and one new manhole. And then there's a Columbia Street and Russell Street that's grouped in as one. And there'll be two proposed, 250 feet, and one new manhole on Columbia Street, and approximately 555 feet of conduit on Russell Street. The third location is Gorham Ave, and that will involve running about 282 feet of conduit. And the last location is Hawes Street and Borland Road. And there'll be approximately 30 feet on Hawes Street and 305 feet on Borland Road. The statutory seven-day notification period was given to all the property owners that bought these proposed grants of location. We do have a representative here from InStar to answer the technical question.
Selectman Daley?
Yeah, I have a question. I think it's really for you, Peter. This, when I look at, I was concerned about the Hawes Street one, because we've just done so much work down in that area of Beacon Street. And this does come right out into Beacon Street, it looks like to me. The yellow on my page seems to come right out to the center of Beacon Street.
Yep, it definitely comes into the new pavement. That being said, when we get into a situation like this where the pavement's three years or less, we like to get a curb-to-curb resurfacing so it doesn't look like it's a trench that was been installed there. So we will ask InStar to repave the street the whole way.
Well, I mean, so there's two issues. One is, you know, when cutting into new pavement, that you just addressed. But also, you know, we've had the neighbors who live in that area and the businesses in that area have had to put up with a lot of disruption over the last few years, and, you know, have been begging us to please stop digging in that area. So how long will this portion of it take? How much disruption are we talking about for the portion that goes out into Beacon Street?
There's Beacon Street, there's Borland. I think that's about 300 feet.
Yeah, and Borland Street? Yes. I'm particularly concerned about where it comes right out into Beacon Street.
I'm trying to, Selectman Daley, I'm trying to...
The top on the, the last page and the top, look at the top one.
The last page.
Yeah.
Which is, maybe this, oh, this, okay, it came apart.
Oh, Hawes runs into Beacon.
It seems...
See, the yellow is going right out into the center of Beacon Street.
No, it actually, it actually stops, it appears to stop before the crosswalk on the Hawes Street side of Beacon Street.
Okay.
It doesn't extend out to the intersection. I, you know, that, that area has, that's on the other end. That's on...
Yeah, that's right.
We showed Beacon Street as being guaranteed, so what they did was they basically dead-ended it roughly at the back of the sidewalk there.
Okay, so it does not actually go into Beacon Street?
Right.
Yes, it does not. Is that what you're saying to me?
That is correct.
Okay, all right, okay. All right. All right. So do we have any other questions?
Yeah, I'm, is this sort of an accumulation of work? I don't think in my years on the board, I've seen this much all at once. What, or is there a major upgrade that's going on? What's, usually we see it for specific developments or a specific need or a specific upgrade for a property. And I'm wondering whether this is part of a more general upgrade of the system?
Yes, it's an ongoing project. They're replacing all the old underground systems with a new, more reliable one. They basically kind of started, in the different areas and towns, they kind of started with the worst areas, and they're working their way down throughout different areas.
Okay. All right.
I know that some of these cables are conduits, I guess, I don't know if this is a Mr. Ditto question, carry more than one vendor's cables? Are any other suppliers, vendors affected by the work that's being done by InStar?
These wires are in the ground, what they call split fiber, and they're basically a direct burial cable. They're not in conduit.
Right.
So when we replace this, they'll be just all gone. There'll be just a new conduit, and the only recipient of that conduit will be InStar.
Okay, so it's just electricity?
Just electricity.
All right. Any other questions or comments, members of the board? This is a public hearing. Is there anybody here who wishes to comment on any of these grants? If so, please raise your hand, and you may come forward to the microphone. Yep, you're welcome to come. You are the person, the one, I think.
You're the public that we'll be hearing from.
All of you.
This might be a ditto, or this is a Ditto question, but I'm just curious...
So first, please identify yourself for the record.
Myself is Edith Reed. I live on 39 Columbia Street. And I'm curious about how long, what exactly is going to be happening on that street, and when, and stuff like that. Because I, you know, I'm, I got the...
You got the notice?
Exactly, but I don't know exactly what's going to happen. That's all I want to know.
Well, here are the people who can answer your question. Columbia Street.
Okay, Columbia and Russell. Okay, we will be obviously replacing the old, the old wire. And what you will see is roughly, is a trench maybe two and a half to three feet wide and about five feet deep. And it will run roughly in the alignment that you see, that yellow line in the plan. And so there'll be a new conduit going in, and there'll be a new house service to all the establishments that front on Columbia. We'll have new services off this new main. To give a ballpark figure, from start to finish, I would estimate this would probably take three to three and a half weeks to complete. And as I said earlier, we don't start this type of construction until, the earliest is the first of April.
Is there, are people going to be able to get in and out of their driveway?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Do you have any other questions from the public? All right. Seeing none, are we ready to take votes? Maybe this is one vote. I move that we approve the petition of InStar Electric Company for permission to construct and a location for such a line of conduits and manholes with necessary cables therein under the following public ways. Edge Hill Road, conduit from existing MH 7844, approximately 285 feet south of High Street, running southerly in a direction of 170 feet to the end of Edge Hill Road, and install one new manhole. Second, Columbia Street, conduit from existing MH 4483, running southeasterly and easterly, a distance of 250 feet, and install one new manhole. Third, Russell Street, conduit from existing MH 4484, approximately 300 feet northeast of Columbia Street, running northeasterly, a distance of 555 feet. Next, Gorham Avenue, conduit from existing MH 4171 near the intersection of Dana Street, running northerly, a distance of 25 feet to Lincoln Road. And Lincoln Road from Gorham Avenue, running northeasterly, a distance of 282 feet. And finally, on Hawes Street, conduit from Hawes Place, running southwesterly, a distance of 30 feet to existing MH 8208 on Borland Street, conduit from Beacon Street, running south... conduit from Beacon Street, running south southerly hence turning and running easterly at Hawes Place a distance of three hundred and five feet to Hawes Place, and install one new manhole. All in favor, please...
Could you repeat that?
No, I don't think I could. Uh, all in favor, please say aye, Selectman Daley. Selectman Benka.
Aye.
Selectman Gold, uh, sorry, Wyszynski.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And next time, Selectman Benka, I'll let you do it. Happy to delegate.
Ms. Reed, if you'd like to take that map for your neighbor, if you'd like to take that nap, map for your neighbors, please do.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Alright, thank you both. See you back in the springtime.
Well, we'll see them out on the street.
That's true. We will see them in the springtime, on the street. Okay, our next item is the tax classification hearing. And we are about a little bit ahead of time, so if you want to set up your presentation, we'll all think of things to say.
Well, I'm just wondering if all those people getting new electric service means their assessment goes up.
No comment.
I think not.
But with, with good luck, it will be improved service for them, I hope. That would be a good thing. So, Mr. McCabe, I see you have with you several colleagues.
I do, I do, yes. I'd like to introduce them, if I may.
Yes, please do.
Let's start with who I am. My name's Gary McCabe. I'm a chief assessor for the town of Brookline as well as chairman of the Board of Assessors. Thank you for this opportunity tonight to present tax classification options for fiscal year fourteen. First, I'd like to introduce some people that came with me. First is Dr. Harold Peterson, who's been on the Board of Assessors for twenty years nearly. We really appreciate Dr. Peterson's participation over these many years. Also with us is Rashid Belosine. Rashid is the deputy chief assessor, full-time on our staff. And the other individual is a special guest I'd like to introduce tonight. His name is Mr. Seung Hun Oh. Mr. Oh is a senior deputy director of the National Tax Service in Seoul, South Korea.
Wow.
He is a U.S. State Department Hubert Humphrey Fellow at Boston University. And he is currently completing a research internship with the Brookline Assessors Office.
Well, welcome to Brookline, and I hope you learned something that you can apply. I have the impression that town tax policy may be very different from what you're accustomed to.
Yeah, my honor to...
Would you, would you go to the microphone?
Just come to the microphone, please. Again, for your information, this is being videotaped. And so if you're there, we can both see and hear you and the video recording.
And this is my honor to meet as members of the board. And then, um, this is a very rare chance because it's, I don't know the, how the, the tax policy at the state level and the federal level. But it's, um, I, this is the very, it's very important to me, so, yeah, it's my honor. Thank you.
It's your opportunity to see how things are applied at the very local level, yes?
Yeah, because it's my country is very small compared to other, other country. We are very centralized. And then, oh, we are the, some, we, oh, we needed to benchmark some state level. This is very useful, I think that. So, yeah, it's very useful experience to me, yeah.
Good. Well, we're very happy to be able to have you as our guest. And I hope this experience is something you will take back with you and it will be good for you when you get home.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you Chairman Duett for that opportunity to introduce Mr. Oh. He'll be with us until June, so much opportunity.
We will see you again next week then.
Right, he's living in town, experiencing that as well as the work of the assessors office. And we do spend time talking about state tax policy. He asked a question one day while we were having a sales tax holiday.
Ah-ha.
I thought that was a good question. Uh, so, if I may, I have some information on behalf of the Board of Assessors to present to you. And then briefly, and then try to answer any questions you have tonight or beyond tonight. My understanding is that the hearing will be open tonight, but that you will consider the material. And then next week, if all goes well, we'll have a vote.
Exactly. The expectation was tonight would be for us to listen and to ask questions. And also, if members of the public have questions, and then we'll put it on our calendar for a vote a week from tonight, on Tuesday.
Very good, thank you. So, so I'll proceed. From a overview perspective, we're, we're looking at the property tax as a way to fund local government services for the fiscal year fourteen town budget. We expect to rely on the property tax to fund sixty-eight percent of our budget. This graph here shows you that over time, over the last seven years, we've actually grown more reliant on the property tax as a percentage of our budget. And now it's sixty-eight percent, up from sixty-three percent in fiscal year oh seven. Next, we want to give you some information about the market that's driving our property assessments. And here, this graph, as well as in the material you have, displays the change in what we call the median assessed value or the middle assessed value for a single-family residential condominiums, two-family and three-family. So the, the blue line is single-family, the red line condominiums, green two-family, and orange, the three-family. As you see, this reaches back into the mid-two thousands where we had a real estate boom and rapidly increasing real estate values, so our assessments tracked upward. And then a dip here, which is the recession, a recent recession, where we had a slight decline in value over one year. But generally, values have been steady to increasing. And you'll notice just, just this last year, there's been a further increase in assessed value at a rate greater than we've seen in the last few years. I'll talk a little bit more about that. So, you know, the trend is now clearly upward in our values. Uh, this slide is a comparison of the prior fiscal year thirteen and the current fiscal year fourteen, total values by major class of property. I'll start with the residential class, which is those one, two, three-family residential condominiums as well as apartment buildings are in the residential class. Or any part of a property that provides housing is in the residential class. Our residential value for fiscal year fourteen is going to be in excess of fourteen point seven billion dollars, up from fourteen billion dollars the prior fiscal year, which is roughly a five percent increase that's primarily market-driven over the period of two thousand and eleven to two thousand and twelve, which are the market periods we studied. Commercial property has increased from one point two seven four billion to one point four billion, or a total increase of nine point two three percent. And I want to provide you a little more detail on that change. I'm going to come back to that. The industrial class of property, which is fairly small for us, there were only nine parcels in industrial class. We're actually down to eight. We lost an industrial parcel, and that's why there was a net decline in value. The property we lost actually had no frontage in Brookline. It's a, was a warehouse behind the houses on, in North, in North Brookline. The street escapes me at the moment, but it, excuse me, Verndale, Verndale Street. So it was behind the houses on Verndale Street. It was a warehouse that was torn down and is now used as a parking lot for an apartment building that was built in Boston. And the land extends into Brookline. So it's no longer an industrial parcel for us. It's a residential parcel. It's parking lot is part of an apartment building. Personal property increased nearly four percent. I can tell you those, those new cables and wires being installed by NSTAR will indeed be new growth in the formula that we use for, for calculating new growth, and will increase the assessment for NSTAR.
So if they're replacing existing?
But it's a new property, so it counts as new growth, right? And it's, it's the formula, the statutory formula, not unlike if you bought a new machine to replace an old machine. The new machine is taxable for the first time and qualifies as new growth, even though it's replacing an existing machine. What we do for tax classification purposes is combine commercial, industrial and personal property. And we call it CIP, which is used, an acronym used for other purposes, but here it's a combined classification purpose.
Only ever so slightly confusing.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. But the combined are over eight percent increase. And I'm going to talk about that a little bit more, as I mentioned. I'm going to go back to the commercial change in value and give you some more information about that. Because unlike the other changes, it was really not uniform across the properties in that class. And I'll give you some information that'll help highlight that a little bit more. If you break our commercial properties down into price quartiles, alright, so vertically, the, the highest quartile of prop, commercial property in Brookline actually increased eleven percent between last year and this year. The lowest quartile increased three percent. So you can see that the change is driven by our largest commercial properties. The middle two quartiles changed seven and eight percent. So again, that nine percent is not, doesn't speak to the value change of every commercial property, primarily, again, driven by the higher valued and larger properties. I also can break that down by use a little bit for you. Office properties increased to fourteen percent, again, driven by the larger office buildings, whereas retail increased a six percent. And other classes increased zero, I'm sorry, not zero percent, eight percent. There were properties that had no change in value due to circumstances involved in that property and its location. So again, the nine percent is not across the board. Overall, our taxable base, our taxable property in Brookline is now sixteen point three billion dollars, up from fifteen point five billion, or overall about a five point three percent increase. You know, as reflected in that graph I showed earlier, you know, driven by one, two, three families. Apartments have gone up and large commercials have gone up as well. We, we do look at our tax exempt property and try to maintain a value, fair value on those. And that's increased a little bit more than five percent as well. The next slide provides a little bit more granular look at some of these classes. It breaks residential down into single-family condominiums, twos and threes combined, apartments, commercial, industrial. And what this does is takes the fiscal year fourteen parcel count, divides it into the fiscal year fourteen value to get an aggregate or a mean or an average value for that subclass. So single-family, the average single-family assessment in Brookline for fiscal year fourteen would be one million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, which is up three point eight percent over the prior year. Condominiums experienced a slightly larger increase, five point three, two and three families, five point one, apartments, five point eight. Again, commercial driven by the larger commercials, almost eleven. And those eight industrials did increase in value, even though we lost one, they, on average, did increase.
Can I just, for purposes of clarification, ask you to say for the public why apartments is only three hundred and twenty-six, it certainly is not the number of units. It's the number of buildings, right?
Properties, correct. Actually, it could be a complex of buildings, but it's considered one parcel.
Right, and all I'm trying to do is just say for people who don't understand, a parcel could be a hundred apartments in one parcel, or more than a hundred apartments in one parcel.
Four hundred.
Could be, four hundred apartments in one parcel, okay.
Um, example is the apartment complex in South Brookline, Hancock Village, is four parcels.
Right.
But a combined total of about four hundred units.
Right.
So, yes, thank you. Those are the parcels, taxable parcels. Any other questions on that slide? Uh, the next slide highlights the growth in our tax base beyond the market changes. So these are, this is growth due to physical changes or changes in use, traditionally driven by single-family permits, and that continues to be the case. So sixty-two, nearly sixty-three million dollars of new value added to our single-family homes year over year. Residential condominiums either through permits or conversion, twenty-five million. Multifamily and apartments, twenty-nine point five. For a total of a hundred and forty-seven million dollars of additional property, taxable property, added to the tax rolls this year, which equates to one point nine million dollars in additional levy growth. Over the prior year, that's about one point two percent of the prior year's levy. So what's happening there is in addition to the ability to increase our levy two and a half percent over the prior year, we can increase it by this growth amount another one point two percent. And that's, that number of one point nine million has been fairly steady over the last three years. Fiscal year twelve and fiscal year thirteen also were about one point nine million dollars in growth. So we've, you know, we've been consistent in that area in, in real estate growth.
Uh, we have a question.
Yes.
A question is probably more for Sean Cronin in the back. What's our growth assumption for budgeting purposes?
One seven.
One seven, okay.
The response is one point seven million.
It was one seven, because they're converting, we did one twenty-one A, so one eight four.
So, should I share that response? Uh, the base projection was one point seven million dollar increase plus a new property that came on the tax rolls for the first time. Let me clarify that. It's not a new property. It's coming on the tax rolls for the first time. It's located at thirteen seventy-one Beacon Street, right in Coolidge Corner. For the last forty years, it's been under a one twenty-one A urban renewal, a corporate excise tax type program. It's called the one corporate, one twenty-one A excise. So that has expired, forty years of that term has expired, and that property would be subject to local real estate taxes. And that becomes growth, yes. So the total was one point eight four in the budget.
So this is the princely sum of ninety-five thousand dollars more than...
Correct, than our budget.
Than our assumption.
Oh, come on, it just says that was well, well calculated assumption.
That's right, yeah.
A hundred and ninety thousand, okay.
So a correction that the base was a million six, adjusted for the new properties, a million seven four, it sounds like.
Okay.
Yeah, so one, a hundred and ninety thousand beyond forecast. Any additional questions on that? Okay, the next two slides are bar graphs that show us a couple of things. And we look at these every year, over a period of years, fiscal year three to thirteen, so like a ten-year period. The larger bars are the percentage of residential value. And this ninety represents ninety percent of all taxable property. So you can see our residential property has been, you know, a little bit above ninety percent of the total. And has been that way for many years. And, you know, it's something slightly less than it was ten years ago. Not because residential values have an increase, but because commercial, industrial and personal has outpaced them for various reasons. That's what those large bars are. The small bars are the percentage of residential levy. And those have been hovering around eighty-four percent, meaning we take ninety percent of the property and we apply eighty-four percent of the tax levy to that. That's what this classification option provides the Board of Selectmen, that you can shift about six, between six and seven percent, or you have shifted between about six and seven percent of the levy from the residential tax base to the commercial tax base. That's what this shows. The next graph is, is sort of the flip side of that. So that the commercial, industrial, personal value, which is the smaller bar, has been hovering around nine percent. But the levy applied to that is nearly sixteen percent. So it's that reciprocal, it's that six to seven percent of the levies shifted to the commercial. That's effectively what you're doing when you apply these factors of one seven five or lately the one seven three. Alright, it's not a seventy-five percent shift, it's a six percent shift, between six and seven, because of the percentage of the base, the tax base that these properties represent. So, over time, you know, the selectmen have been fairly consistent in how they've applied this shift. this shift. The next slide tries to bring this to further light. The levy shift, again, is the, is displayed here. It's a smaller bar, the darker bar, it's a levy shift, and it's since oh three to thirteen. So over ten years, the levy shift is very, very little, and the median levy shift over that time is six point seven three percent. There should be a percent sign there. The larger yellow bars are the CIP value percent. So again, our value percents, you know, hovered around nine percent over this period for commercial, industrial, and grown slightly, so it's slightly outpaced residential, interestingly. The next slide, again, a bar graph, a little more information here, so we'll take a minute to look at that. The vertical axis is the percent change in the real estate tax on a percentage basis. If these classification factors were adopted, and what's displayed is one seventy to one seventy-five, not the entire array, which is actually one to one seventy-five, but to the top end where the, the selectmen have been focused on over this period. The bars represent single-family in the, in the blue condominiums, and the red, two-family, three-family apartments and commercials, so all those subclasses. And what it shows is, add a factor of any of these choices, let's say one seven three, which was last year, this would be the change in the commercial tax, it would be nearly six percent, all right? And this would be the change in the single-family tax, it would be less than two percent, all right? And the reason that they're not uniform is because the value, assessed values did not change in a uniform way from one year to the next. Commercial property, property value increases outpaced residential, right? The benefit that we've had from this particular graph over the years is to sort of look at what happens when you move this decision, this factor decision. The highest factor you could adopt during this classification process is one point seven five, and you can see that it has a larger impact on commercial, almost a seven percent change. Within the ones, the numbers presented, the one point seven factor would, would apply a four percent change in commercial, so that's pretty significant, a three percent difference. Whereas on the single-family, that same decision would, would shift the tax burden upward of about two percent on the single-family, all the way down to nearly, you know, one percent. So less of an impact on a percentage basis. And the reason for that is because, again, the commercial property is only nine percent of our total, so these decisions have a bigger impact on, on that group of properties. The next couple of slides are busier with information on them, mostly data related to actual tax dollars and percentages. I will bring to your attention, in the tab three of the workbook that you have, on page, we're on page...
Six. Six.
Six. The headers that you see on slide twelve on page six and slide thirteen on page six in your workbook need to be revised. That top slide is single-family and two-family, and I think your copy says residential condos. So if you wouldn't mind correcting that for me, cross out residential condo and put in two-family. The slide below thirteen becomes residential condos instead of the two-family. So the two-family information was moved up to the top slide to, to be a companion with the single-family. And I'll tell you why I did that. That was a recent change, and that's why we missed it on the header. And this is the reason. For the single-family and two-family properties, we looked at the tax impact with the residential exemption as it's been adopted over the last twenty years, at twenty percent of the value. We've applied that, and the reason we did that is because eighty-seven, this little number right here, eighty-seven percent of the single-family homes received the residential exemption, all right? Not a hundred, but eighty-seven. And on the two-family, so now this data from this green bar below, related to the two-family, seventy-two percent of the two-family properties in Brookline received the residential exemption. That's new information based on questions you asked last year, or, you know, the last few years. So, so we added that information.
Is that seventy-two percent receiving it on a hundred percent of the two-family?
Correct.
In other words, they have, do they have to have family in both units?
No, only one.
So if they are living in one half of the unit, they get the benefit of the residential exemption?
Correct. Entire residential exemption.
Same with three families.
Right. That's true of three families as well, and, in fact, larger. You could have an apartment building where you're the owner and you live there, you still get the residential exemption.
On the entire building?
Wow.
You get one residential exemption.
Yes. But on the, on the value of the, if you have a hundred-unit apartment building and you're the owner and you're living in it, in one of those units, you get the residential exemption on the entire value of that building?
On that parcel, right. But the adjustment is a uniform amount. It's the same residential exemption everyone receives.
Yeah, okay, but that's...
It's not a percentage.
So it's just one?
It's based on a percentage, and we'll go through that math in a minute, right?
I understand, yep.
Yeah. But, so what this means is, you know, seventy-two percent of the two-family are owner-occupied, the property is owner-occupied, right? So how these numbers work, and this is one of the reasons I think we take a week to consider these numbers, there are awful lot of them. What this says is fiscal year thirteen, so we're looking at a change over fiscal year thirteen, the tax bill on a median, single-family value with the residential exemption was ten thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars last year. Now, this year, these factors that are presented here would tell you, say, what the tax would be this year. A factor adopted of one hundred and seventy-three, as we have in the last few years, would produce a tax bill of ten thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars, or a hundred and fifty-one dollars increase equal to one point four percent. So that's how you read this chart, all right? So a median two-family at one seven three, the increase in tax would be two hundred and seventy-four dollars, or two point nine percent increase in tax. So we're looking at, compared to last year's tax on median value. Selectman Banka.
Yeah. Could, could, this shows a median, single-family value of nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. If you go back to slide six, what are we looking at? Is that the mean? The mean is one three two five?
The mean with, is one three...
Okay.
Seven, without the residential exemption.
Okay, so, so there are two differences between slide six and slide thirteen. Slide six is showing the mean value without the residential exemption. Slide twelve is showing the median value with the residential.
With the residential exemption.
Okay, thank you.
And the residential exemption amount is about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, I'll show you that in a minute. There's additional information in your workbook in tab two, sheet A, that corresponds to this slide as well. That gives you even more information about the possible impact of various shift options. So tab two, sheet A, we'll give you, A in upper right-hand corner, will give you additional information that this slide tries to highlight.
Can you go back to slide eleven? Now, this is without the residential exemption. Would this chart be a lot different with the residential exemption?
It would be a little different, Selectman Woschinski. The decisions we have to make in presenting the information are based on this thinking, that not everyone receives the residential exemption, all right? So when you're comparing with, between classes, we tend to take it away. When you're comparing within the class, we'll include it.
Okay, so...
So between, it's not such a good idea to include it because not everybody gets it. You know, apartments, I'll show you in a minute, are, very few have residential, commercial, no, there's no residential exemption, that sort of thing. So I think in fairness, when you're between classes, to leave it out, that's, that's our thinking, yeah. It certainly would change if, if you were to consider the residential exemption, and we can do that if you think it'd be helpful in your decision. You know, we can follow up with that. Just let me know, okay? So where we're headed is additional information about residential condominiums, which is a significant class for us. In fact, it's the, what we call the predominant class of property in the town of Brookline. In other words, there are more residential condominium parcels than any other property, all right? It's about, well, it's over nine thousand.
Can I just follow up a little bit on that to be sure I understand? Your sixty-two percent residential exemption therefore means what? That many are owner-occupied?
Sixty-two percent are owner-occupied. When we grouped the residential condominiums and the three families, which are forty-nine percent owner-occupied, we left the residential exemption adjustment out. So the four hundred and forty-seven thousand is without the residential exemption. That's just how we decided to present the data. We certainly could, the residential exemption is about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars off of that. Now, I have another slide that demonstrates that. But what would happen is this is the, again, it's apples to apples because you're comparing to the same situation in the prior year. Residential condominium without the residential exemption, the tax on the median property was forty-nine hundred and fifty-four dollars. At the one point seven three factor, that would go up a hundred and thirty-two dollars or two point seven percent. For the three-family, the tax was thirteen, four, twenty-five. At the one point seven three, it would go up three hundred and thirty-five dollars or two point five percent. So those two line up fairly well on, on percent increases. Again, that single-family doesn't line up with those. And the reason for that, the single-family, you'll recall, at the one point seven three was one point four percent. The median two-family was two point nine, which lines up a little better with the condos and the three-families. The reason for that is that the single-family homes actually lagged behind in terms of increase in value behind the residential condominiums, twos and three families, slightly. All right? As a group, the single-family homes did not increase in value at the same rate that condominiums, twos, and threes did. That's why you see a shift there to the residential condominiums, twos, away from the single-families, they actually pay a lesser increase at any of these options. Questions?
Just, just to, if you go back to slide eleven, I have a feeling that there might be a little glitch in that slide. It seems to show one point seven one and one point seven two at about the same level, and I would think that you'd see the percentage increase, you know, the, the commercial going up in a more linear fashion rather than taking the big jump from one seven to one point seven one and then leveling off.
They look, they look like a mirror. Although I'm not sure, if you look at the three, no, two-family...
The three-family goes down a little. I'm, I'm sort of curious, though.
I'll take a look at that, Selectman Banka, to check the numbers behind the bar graphs and let you know tomorrow. But they're not exactly the same, so...
I agree.
Yeah. But they're very similar. And in fact, they're the most uniform changes.
Counterintuitive.
Interesting. Well, the reason for that is because, again, the commercial base went up at a greater rate than the residential base. So there was this slight shift, natural or market-driven shift to commercial property in this non-uniform change in assessed value.
But why would the slope change so dramatically on the commercial once you hit seven three? Yeah, there's, there's no, very little slope between seven one and two.
Yeah, if there's a data issue, it's probably with that one right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
The, and if you go to the, to the next slides, obviously, and, and I don't know if there's a sort of, I looked through this...
There is a commercial. I put it after the residential exemption.
Yeah, it's, it's on, yep, okay, we're going to get to it on eighteen.
I am, and, and I chose the order there, Selectman A, because I want to get to the residential exemption before we jump to commercial.
Fair enough.
Because it does play such a large role. So that's what the next slide is to show you, how the residential exemption is calculated and what this, where this percentage adjustment comes in. So by law, this is the formula. If you're going to adopt the residential exemption, and we have continuously since fiscal year eighty-four or so, that we, the formula starts with the total residential value of fourteen point, in our case, fourteen point seven billion dollars, divides that by the residential parcel count, which is sixteen thousand, eight hundred, to get an average residential value based on aggregate mean. So then, that is multiplied by the selected factor, which is up to twenty percent, to get the value of the residential exemption, which is applied uniformly to all eligible taxpayers, whether it's a single-family, two-family, three-family apartment building. Then that is multiplied by the tax rate that's determined through the classification process. So the examples on the next slide are like this. If we had a single tax rate with no shift, it would be twelve dollars and thirty-five cents with the residential exemption in place, but no classification. So the residential exemption would be that amount. A hundred and seventy-five shift, the residential tax rate would be eleven dollars and thirty-five cents, and that would be the amount of the residential exemption. The hundred and seventy-three shift option or factor option would be eleven dollars and thirty-eight cents, and that would be the residential exemption. The current tax rate is eleven, residential tax rate is eleven dollars and sixty-five cents. The history of the rates is on the back of your book. The history, recent history of exemption amounts are on this slide. Fiscal, last year, nineteen hundred and fifty-four dollars, the prior year, eighteen ninety. And you see, it's increased every year. The reason for that is because of the prior slide, the total residential value's increased, but the parcel count really hasn't changed so as significantly. So what you end up with is a higher residential exemption amount each year. We cannot go, however, we cannot go above twenty percent. Any questions on that? There's some additional information on calculating the residential exemption in the second tab in your workbook, including the last page on that second tab will tell you the answer to a question I'm typically presented with, and that's, what is the break-even number? In other words, because the residential exemption is applied only to residential property, it affects the residential rate, all right? So the residential exemption, in effect, increases the residential rate to offset the amount of the exemption. Because the rate changed, and then you apply the residential exemption at, in this case, in this example that you have, at the twenty percent, the break-even value is one million, three hundred and fifty-four thousand, very near that average, single-family value. But what that means is any assessment, residential assessment above one million, three hundred and fifty-four thousand actually has a net negative benefit of the residential exemption, and any amount below that has a net positive effect, meaning a reduction in the net tax I can tell you, based on a question that came up recently, that the percentage of properties below the break-even, below the break-even is eighty-five percent.
What was the number?
And, and the reason for that is because, you know, at the high end, you have residential properties that don't receive the residential exemption, the apartment buildings. So considering, you know, how to apply the residential exemption is one of the, what I call the basic four factors in deciding the tax rate, right? Is the value changes, classification, the residential exemption, all get considered in there, all right?
So, to state it otherwise, the residential exemption essentially shifts taxes from condos and lower-priced single families, among others, to higher-priced single families and to apartments.
Correct. The next slide, two slides, will demonstrate that on your workbook, page eight. Slide, this is slide sixteen here. So what this shows is that over this ten-year period, the green portion of the bar, or the darker portion of the bar, is the average single-family tax, all right? The lighter or reddish portion of the bar is the residential exemption on top of that, all right? In other words, without the residential exemption, you'd be paying the higher amount, okay? So the residential exemption is the discount that brings you down to the darker bar, all right? So that's just single-family. The next slide is just condominiums. So same, the darker bar is... So same, the darker bar is the actual tax on those properties, average condominium tax, and the lighter or red is the amount of residential exemption or the discount. So as you can see, for that subclass, the condominiums, the benefit of the exemption is greater. It's a greater percent of the tax. And the reason for that is because the exemption is a flat amount, not a percentage of your tax. It's a flat amount for everyone. The only exception to that, and there are a few cases where we need to apply the exception, and that's that you have to pay at least ten percent of your real estate tax bill. So your residential exemption, say at nineteen hundred and fifty-four dollars, cannot reduce your real estate tax bill below ten percent of its gross amount. So then it's adjusted. But otherwise, the residential exemption is not adjusted. It's applied in whole to all eligible taxpayers. Currently, there are nearly eleven thousand eligible taxpayers receiving the residential exemption.
There are eleven thousand receiving the residential exemption. That doesn't mean eleven thousand are benefiting from it.
Correct. Eighty-five percent are benefiting.
Okay.
Right. Going back to this slide, because the, there's sixteen thousand eight hundred parcels in that residential class, and nearly eleven thousand are receiving the residential exemptions.
If the residential exemption were ten percent as opposed to twenty percent, which would be an option.
You could do that.
We could do that. The benefit would be less, but you'd still have, would it still break at eighty-five percent? Fifteen percent? I can probably do the math.
We think yes.
Pardon?
We think yes, it would.
Yeah.
The tax rate would be lower.
Tax rate would be.
So the benefit would still break down eighty-five, fifteen, but it would reduce the rate, overall rate.
It would reduce that delta, basically.
Correct. Which would reduce the total without it. And that's because the rate would be reduced. The residential tax rate would be reduced.
Right.
Because the residential tax rate has to increase when you take the exemption out.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, I'm just wondering if it would break at the same point.
Our first thinking is that it would, but we certainly want to look at that and test it. We may have in the prior years, but we'd certainly redo that, retest that, if that's something you're interested in. I am gonna move on from the residential exemption to a couple more slides. The next is apartments and commercials. Apartment and multifamily, so anything, any property with four units or more, up to, you know, five hundred, all right? So they're in this group. Fifteen percent of those receive the residential exemption, four units or more, all right? The median multifamily assessment, apartment is one point nine million, and the tax last year for that median property was twenty thousand seven hundred. So these are the tax bills at the various rate options or factors. At the one seven-three that we applied last year, the increase would be nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars or four point eight percent, about what the total value of that class increased, nearly five percent. For commercial property, there's zero residential exemptions, right? For all, the commercial portion's not eligible. The median commercial assessment, one point one million, tax very similar to the median apartment, although for different reasons, a lower value, a higher rate. A one point seven-three factor would increase that tax by twelve hundred dollars or five point nine percent. That's how you read that chart. And again, there's additional information in tab two, sheet B, meaning without the residential exemption, before residential exemption. All right. The last slide is informational that we provide. It's the number, because we're talking about property taxes, one of the provisions of the system we have is that there's exemptions for different taxpayers, for eligibility criteria, like, for example, I have them up here. Surviving spouse and minors, veterans, visually impaired elderly, or seniors. These are the number of exemptions applied in the most recent, complete fiscal year, fiscal year thirteen, and the amount of exemptions applied. The reason we have a subtotal here for all classes of a hundred and twenty-nine, those are reimbursable, at least partly reimbursable by the state. We have additional exemptions, the deferral, we now have ten taxpayers in the deferral, up from five just a couple of years ago. That's tax that's deferred to be paid at a later time with interest. And our very successful senior work-off abatements, we now have twenty-five participants in that, heading towards thirty at a maximum of a thousand dollars apiece. That's not reimbursable. So that's a summary of our exemptions. You know, we continue to work with the Council on Aging and the Senior Center particularly on promoting those exemptions. So that's all the information I have in slide format. Be certainly happy to answer any questions. You know, Dr. Peterson's here, or Rashid's here, if there's technical questions or questions based on, you know, the history of what we've done in the past, Selectman Banker.
Yeah, if, if we put, and obviously, we can't do it visually, but the information on slides twelve, thirteen, and eighteen together, you, if we stayed at our current one point seven-three, and maybe, maybe the best slide to bring up would be slide twelve.
I can tell you, in the tab two, that's done for you.
Okay, do you have?
Those are, I don't have it as a slide, but tab two has that information for you, kind of, all those combined.
Just the comparison, you know, at one point seven-three, if we stood, if we stood pat, you'd have an increase in the median commercial of five point nine percent, single-family one point four percent, two-family two point nine, two point seven for condos, and two point five for three families. So because, I mean, if we're looking at smoothing this, just looking at, at this metric, it could lead you to, to one conclusion, which would be actually reducing the classification to one point seven-oh or something like that. And in the past, I've asked that we look at these numbers in various ways, that we not just look at the median, but we also look at the, essentially breaking out the numbers within. And I think that might be particularly appropriate this year. If, particularly if large commercial properties are driving this, I think we might want to be looking at some of the measurements that I sent you in the email today that I've looked at in the past, but also sort of what the quartiles and the deciles are within, particularly within the commercial properties, and whether you'd really, what kind of impact you would see on the large properties, on the smaller commercial properties. And I'm wondering if, if we can make any progress on that tonight, or if that's for another day.
Well, my response is yes. To present additional information on the change in the tax, as you've requested, we'll prepare that, make that available to you. The reason we don't include that information here is it assumes that we know the tax rate, and we don't, all right, for this year. So taking a median, I mean, at certain options, I understand that. But it focuses on the tax amount based on a rate. And historically, what we've done is focused on the assessment, the median or the average assessment, depending on looking in between or within a class, all right? But we can go beyond that and say, okay, if this is what we vote for a tax rate, what would happen? I can tell you, Selectman Banker, that within that commercial class, again, the highest quartile increased eleven percent in value, the lowest quartile, three. So the change in tax is gonna show you that same kind of difference.
Yeah, and.
And we know that.
Yeah, and yet, I guess we get the median increasing by five point nine percent at one point seven-three, right? So that, that shows that commercial had been.
Right, and it doesn't reflect on all the commercial class. I understand that, because there was a non-uniform change in values in that, that class of property, correct? Whereas there are more uniform change in the residential classes of property.
Right.
And, you know, the, the, the factors behind that are the Longwood Medical Area reaching into Brookline in a significant way, particularly at Brookline Place. So, you know, that has created desirability in that location and increased the value of those properties to investors. So you didn't see, you know, we don't see that across the entire commercial base, just in certain areas and certain properties.
I understand your interest in this, Selectman Banker, but since we can't apply a different rate to different parcels, it's not clear to me where it takes us.
No, the question, the question is, if you, and we saw, and this may not be the case this year because of the dramatic, relatively dramatic increase in commercial values. But last year, if you, if you look at the impacts of the tax classification at various levels, and you're trying to, if, if a goal is to smooth the impact on residential, commercial, and so forth, you could, you can get different results based on whether you look at the impact on the median property. You can get, if you look at the average tax increase divided by the value of the average property, you can get a different result. I think last year, for example, we had the, the commercial increasing in, the median commercial property increasing, but also a number of commercial properties decreasing in their taxes. So the dispersion is different. And I think just looking at one measure, the, the impact on the median property might lead to a conclusion that wouldn't really speak to all of the properties within the class.
I don't disagree. I can, there are individual commercial properties where there's been no change in value.
Yeah.
So the total change in tax will be based on what happens to the rate. So if the rate goes down, there's actually gonna be a decrease in tax. That's correct. So there are property-specific adjustments that aren't, aren't reflected in the median or the average on both the high and the, and the low side. And a more detailed analysis would certainly show that.
I mean, what I'm, for example, Ten Brookline Place was assessed at about sixty million dollars, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three million, and recently sold for a hundred and twenty or a hundred and twenty-one million. I assume, does, does this reflect a change in its assessment?
It does.
To what now?
Ninety-two million.
Okay. You know? And perhaps arguably even more.
Well, you know, we could, we could certainly talk about that, but, you know, that's where we are. There was some work on it, this property, there's growth there, there's a change in lease terms, a change in ownership.
Yeah, and, and that probably also affects similar properties like Eight Thirty and Eight Fifty Boylson Street.
Eight Fifty.
Eight Fifty Boylson?
Oh, great, with Eight Fifty, right. It's a similar desirability. It's a high-end, you know, A, Class A medical office building, right? That's, that's convenient to Longwood Medical Area.
But that, but I think probably the, the political concern on this board would be, what is the impact on the small commercial property and the small commercial property owner?
And again, that lowest quartile changed three percent.
Yeah, yeah. And so I'd sort of like to tease that information out and, and see, because that, I think, would be the concern, and I, and I think people would say, hey, these large office buildings are perhaps still under-assessed at, you know, if the sale price is a hundred and twenty million, you know?
Well, we do recalculate assessments every year.
Yeah, yeah.
But why, why is the assessment so far below the sale price?
That's a good question. I'll attempt to answer that. The assessment's based on the income stream to that property and what we believe is a accurate capitalization rate to convert that income stream to value. What a recent group of real estate investors, global real estate investors, felt, you know, they could get out of that property, may be something a little different. I think as we move forward, we'll begin to see that a little bit more. It's not unlike the purchase of Dexter Park a couple of years ago. You know, we had an opportunity to talk to the investor of that property, what they were thinking, what they were expecting to get out of it. And, you know, as, as we've learned more, we've been able to show that in our assessment. You know, prior to that, I'd point to the sale of Longwood Towers for a hundred and ten million to another global real estate investment company, and, you know, and that failed. You know, a third of that property sold at twenty million dollars several years later. So, you know, there's risks taken by real estate investors, some are successful investments, some are not. We'll learn more about that property, but I think what's underlying it is desirable tenants now with long-term leases favorable to the property owner.
So, yeah. Just Chairman DeWitt, to, to try to wrap up the answer to your question, I think that there is so much variation within the commercial class and the impacts that might happen to individual properties within that class. And I think it, it's, it's probably important for this board to see what's actually happening on the ground with respect to the large commercial properties and the small commercial properties that, you know, in many cases, form the backbone of the small commercial areas in town.
Right, and, and I'll agree with Selectman Banker that having a more, a bit more detail and striation within the commercial will help me get to where I think we should be with, with the shift.
Sure, we could provide that information.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions for members of the board? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to ask a question or comment on the presentation from the assessor with regard to tax classification? Yes, sir, Mr. Larry, welcome.
Good evening, Chairman DeWitt, members of the board. After having to wade through all of that information and data, I will be brief. I'm here this evening representing the Brookline Chamber of Commerce. My name is Richard T. Larry. And first, I'd like to express the chamber's appreciation for the board's actions over the past few years in setting the CIP factor at one point seven-three. In reviewing all of the hearing material, and I've had an opportunity to, to look at the various charts, there would appear to be no compelling reason to change the factor for FY fourteen. When you exclude the substantial value increases associated with the medical office properties at One Brookline Place, Ten Brookline Place West, and Eight Fifty Boylson Street, the increase in commercial property values is approximately the same as the increase in residential property values of five percent. Last year's increases were one point six-oh for residential and two point two-nine percent for commercial. So they were relatively, relatively close. We were happy to hear that, with the exception of general office space, commercial vacancy rates decreased over the period. Now, at a shift of one point seven-three, and I am repeating some of the data that Mr. McCabe has given you, the median single-family tax increase would be a hundred and fifty-one dollars, or one point four percent, while the median commercial tax increase would be twelve hundred and ten dollars, or five point nine percent. The tax rate reduction, and it's nice, I have one for a change, would be minus two point three-four percent for residential and one point nine-oh percent for commercial. In closing, I would like to note that when Brookline adopted classification many years ago, the town's commercial valuation was between fifteen and twenty percent of the total valuation. It has been below ten percent of the total for at least the last fifteen years. Very few other comparable towns with commercial values under ten percent have adopted classification. So the chamber would be most appreciative if you would set the CIP factor at 1.73% for FY14. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this subject? Yes, please identify yourself for the record.
Sarah Lynn Alair, and I'm town meeting member from precinct 16. And I just want to speak out for lower-income seniors who are trying to live in their homes, and particularly if, will probably get a tax increase this year, and then with the overrides coming, I think some consideration should be given to help and support people living in their, in their homes. We've seen from Mr. McCabe's presentation, there is a small program to enable seniors who can work to do some work to reduce their tax income, tax rate, but it's, particularly with the overrides, I don't think that's going to go very far, plus majority of lower-income seniors can't do the work, so I don't know how many it applies to, not too many. And I would suggest that doing something to support seniors, lower-income seniors living in their home would do two things in addition to helping them, and the first would be to help lower the, I'm going to say lower, but keep stable at any rate the burgeoning school population. And the second thing is, I think it would help preserve income diversity, since many of these people are probably living in more moderately priced housing, and it would keep that moderate pricing, house pricing available, at least for a number of years. So I hope something could be done, whether it's a elimination of some fees or some other consideration, I hope that that will be done.
Thank you. I would just add that we are constrained by state law in terms of the exemptions that we can give, and my understanding is that we are basically up to the maximum in terms of exemptions for lower-income people or lower-income, lower-income residents or, or seniors.
Right. What kind of exemptions are you're talking about? You mean the, the things that Mr. McCabe was listing?
Yes, exactly.
I'm doing, talking maybe something like reducing some fees or eliminating some fees?
That's not part of the tax system.
No, but she raises an interesting point, that's something we could consider, for instance, the, the trash fee.
Right.
Something like that, is something that we could consider, which would not be part of our vote on the tax rate, but an idea, and I thank you for it.
Right.
Regina Crowley, town meeting member, also from precinct 16. Thank you, Nancy, for appreciating that, because I really have to point out that even when they increased the tax work-off program, another $250, it was washed away by the increase in the taxes that year. So we're kind of, since then, we have a water meter fee, that's $200 a year for having the water meter. What do seniors do? They cut back on the water, we have a higher rate because we use less. We have kind of got seniors boxed in, and anything, what we need really are heroes. And the political will for that comes out of the Board of Selectmen, the ability to implement it certainly rests with Mel Kleckner, the town administrator, but the political will for it comes out of you guys. And I speak for a precinct that's 40% seniors over the age of 6A in my precinct alone, living in single-family homes, and the overwhelming majority are on fixed incomes. And they are, as I can attest from just our socials that we have, that they have health issues, they have, they're on Medicare, most of them, with the supplements, and they're paying as much as 100 or more a month for one pill, because that's the name of various insurance programs. So we're, we're really not treasuring, you don't mean to not treasure the seniors, but we're not valuing how valuable they are staying in their homes, the most we can keep them there, because every one of them, when people come to buy our homes, it's going to be people with children going to the schools, so you have a net gain by keeping us in our home. And I'm looking for the political will to, and it does belong in this conversation, even if you can't adjust the thing, although Selectman Banker raised an interesting idea when he said we ought to be looking at small business versus big business. You could look at small, limited-income people living in their home, and they can do income proof versus people who are quite wealthy, who are seniors. You don't have to give it across the board.
I think that's the part we're not allowed to do under the, the real estate property tax.
We do have deferrals, and we do have people who are means-tested, and one of the things that we've done over the years is increased outreach, so that people who qualify under means-tested exemptions will come forward, which were, was not the case years ago.
Yeah, maybe we can have Mr. McCabe explain a little bit about those two programs that we do have.
Yeah, but back to the fee kind of thing, you can have a means test for that, and you don't have to get, take away all fees for everyone of a certain age, but it's reasonable to say, but we value the people who grew this town.
Well, the fees are more within our control, so that certainly is something for the school.
So it comes down to anything in the world that you can do to help the seniors stay in this forever, if they possibly could, in their homes. To paraphrase a nurse, when I was a patient advocate for someone in intensive care, and I brought him back to thank the nursing staff, and I said, "Do you recognize us?" Well, I recognize you, but he'd have to lie down and see the bottom of his feet for me to recognize him. I don't want, I want us to go out the same way as that kind of thing, where we live in our homes until we're ready not to live anywhere. So anything in the world you can do to be a hero for seniors, I would be grateful. Thank you.
Selectman Daley, I can offer a few things. The deferral program is a temporary exemption, and you know, it's a program that we promote heavily, we've increased it from five to 10, but certainly could be more, because the town eventually will get that tax revenue back when the property's transferred. So, you know, we, we offer that when seniors call. But one of the challenges of those programs, the means test, as Chairman DeWitt mentioned, there's both income and asset tests. And, and you know, the, meeting both of those criteria is, is difficult for many of our homeowners. We can point to the senior work-off as an example, where we have 25 taxpayers in that program, there's only an income test, not an asset test, or what the law calls whole estate. So if you could eliminate the whole estate portion of the test, I think you would see more seniors eligible, as evidenced by the work-off program. But the fact is, we can't, you know, we must include both the whole estate and the income test. So we'll continue to look at opportunities to raise those levels to allow more seniors in as time goes along, but that seems to be the biggest challenge, the dual test.
And the senior exemption, I think people have to be quite elderly to take advantage of that.
Seventy, correct, years of age.
Not that elderly.
Not that elderly.
Are, is, is, is there, there are 25 seniors who are taking advantage of the, the work-off program. Are there any unmet demands there, or are there any people who said, "I'd like to do it," and they, there was a cap that prevented them from doing it?
I believe there are. We've expanded that program to 30 for fiscal year 14, and I, and I think we're going to get there. So, you know, that, one of the commitments that the Board of Assessors made together with the Council on Aging, was each year to look at our capacity to manage more eligible taxpayers in that program. There's a couple of other components, just not eligibility. It's their skill set, will they fit into a position within town government that's available, and the entire program needs to be managed. Right now, it's managed by the jobs coordinator at the senior center on a part-time basis. So what eventually may happen in Selectman Bank is we'll butt up against our ability to manage the program. We haven't yet, you know, we're, we're, we're going to see how 14 goes with 30, and we'll, we'll look beyond that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, do we have any other?
Yeah, I, I, I had just asked the town administrator, and my recollection is actually that the water fee, I, I don't think it's true of the refuse fee, but I do believe the water fee is linked to one of the senior income-based exemptions, is, is that?
That's correct, is a, a 20% discount on your water fee if you're eligible for either the 41C or the 17D exemptions. So on this chart above here, the surviving spouse and minors or the 41C elderly, so there's 13 taxpayers who are receiving the 20% discount on their water fee. You can't, on its own merit, qualify for the water discount without going through the property tax exemption, you have to be an owner of the property.
If, if somebody qualifies for the property tax exemption, is that automatically applied to the water fee?
It is, we administer that, there's no separate application.
They don't have to separately, okay, that, okay.
Correct. And I, my understanding, having participated, at least witnessed that discussion, was the intent was to sort of offset that, that higher rate.
Exactly.
At the lower consumption levels.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, the, the other, the other fee, or the other use fee that we have is the trash fee, the solid waste fee. But other than that, I don't think there's any.
I don't think we have very many options.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
All right. Are we ready to move on? Then, thank you, Mr. McCabe, and all of your assistance, we appreciate your very thorough and detailed presentation, and furthermore, your willingness to go back and recalculate everything if we ask you to do more. So I guess we'll see you again next week.
That'd be fine, thank you.
Thanks very much. Okay, next item is a presentation. From our Human Relations and our Human Resources Departments, but we are going to hear, wait until the classification things are cleared away. So, welcome, Mr. Jellino.
Hi.
And I just will say, as an introduction, that this is a presentation, we're not going to take a position on this. We assume that this could be a topic for, in fact, I believe is on the agenda for the Committee on Diversity and Equal Opportunity and Affirmative Action, so it will go to that committee for some discussion, and we'll probably hear from you again. So we're not planning to take any action, we just want to hear from you.
Okay.
And I would also like to observe that this is a collaboration between Health and Human Services and Human Resources, and I guess the first product since Town Meeting voted to create the position that you now occupy.
That is correct.
So we welcome you here in your capacity as the direct, I'm sorry, you're the Human Relations and Human Services Administrator.
Yes, that's correct.
Correct.
Well, thank you for having us here this evening to actually talk about the document. I think everyone has copies at this point.
Yep.
Okay. Before I get started, I just want to actually acknowledge Sandra DeBeau, actually the HR Director, and actually the staff member, Rebecca Jokum in the back there.
Hello, Rebecca. You're allowed to come and sit in the front if you like.
She has put in a lot of work in putting this document together through its many changes and probably continued changes in the future. I also want to state that this is a living document, meaning that it's going to change over the course of time when new techniques and new ways of reaching folks around there, we're planning to include it in the document. I also want to say, this is another example of what I became to appreciate in, in the town, of the collaborations between the different departments to put something together like this, and it's a great piece of work, and looking forward to actually more, a further collaboration with other departments, as well as with Sandra in the future. So the question I have is, why do we need this blueprint? And for me, there are several different reasons. First of all, it's a document that demonstrates the town's commitment to diversifying its workplace, in particular for upper management. We know that that's been a concern in the town for, for a while, and I think the efforts that our town has made, although it's not as successful as we would like them to be, the fact are that we are taking strides and, and a big effort to actually make that happen. It's a, it's a work in progress. It also provides the town with a process that may increase the diversity of the applicant pool, that's pretty obvious. It provides a minimum standard for recruiting efforts that may lead to a diverse applicant pool, and again, the potential of hiring of minorities in upper management positions. I think a real important part of that is, because of the sort of, I'm going to say quasi-standardization at this point, it allows the town to periodically review each step of the recruiting process, and to see what's working, what's not, and modify those things as, as appropriate. And again, it goes to the emphasis, this is a living document, we'll change it. You also will notice that it's over 22 pages long. The funny thing about it is, it, only one and a half pages are actually the process, the rest of it is a listserv, which Rebecca did a remarkable job, job of pulling together, listing various organizations that represent different diverse groups in the, in the community, in Massachusetts and abroad. So how was the blueprint developed? We started the process actually in early May, looking at what the town was doing, and pulling out those things that were working, and then we started looking at what other towns and businesses were doing at the time. We also had some discussions with some high-level folks who actually do a lot of work in recruiting diverse staff, staff folks. We, in addition, again, this is where the collaboration comes from, we actually talked to Human Resources, we also talked to Town Council, we talked to actually the Health Department, which actually has a very diverse staff, and we, you know, we were looking like, okay, what do we do to sort of promote this? And I think a good example, were a good example of how the approach actually works. In fulfilling Rebecca's position with Chris, Chana Solket, we actually looked at the job description and the job announcement, and we made modifications. And I must say that we had a lot of minority candidates who applied for the job. In fact, I would say of the eight final candidate, the majority were of minority. So it does, the system does work. It could be, though, that, you know, the nature of the work, though, there tend to be more minorities and stuff that go in that position too, but the fact of that, we got a big pool, and we're really pleased by that. All right, I just, I want to end on the key strength, the strengths of the blueprint, because I think it's pretty self-evident what we do in there. But it provides an extensive listing of organizations that the town can send job announcements, and that works both ways, I'm sorry, it works both ways. We can get, you know, from HR, we can actually take those job announcements and, and actually keystroke, just send them to all these organizations. But it works on the flip side, too, if we know of someone who's looking to hire in the town, just as they're the town employee, but, you know, other businesses and organizations in the town, we can actually take that resume and send it and broadcast it to these folks as well. So it works both ways. And again, it provides a mechanism to evaluate and modify job announcements and postings to encourage underrepresented populations to apply for town positions. I think that's really key, to have a monitoring process in there. Now, it doesn't go into detail who's going to do that at this point, because I think that's the nature of your, one of the things that your committee is looking at, who's going to do this, and when and how. So it does allow for that kind of expansion. Well, actually, it encourages department heads and others involved in hiring staff to diversify their screening and interview committee processes whenever possible, and we have been doing that. I actually sat online for the water, for DPW, and I do believe at this point that Town Council, there are some folks of a diverse nature in, that's going to be sitting on that, those committees, those search committees. So we're doing some good things. And I actually watched the Select- So we're doing some good things. And I actually watched the selectmen, actually, in a couple situations, actually talk and say, are you sure you're going to be reaching a diverse population when recruiting? And I think that's applauded. And I think that's, a lot of groups want to see that upper-level investment. I think that's happening now, too. So, that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Sandra. If she's got any things that she wanted to add, and I'll take questions afterwards.
Thank you. Again, I'd just like to echo that I think that this is a great idea. When we were going to out for Town Council, we went to the places that we would normally go, but then, just to get a broad array of a whole variety, we were able to send it to Rebecca, and with one push of a button, or maybe a couple, it went out to all these other associations. And so particularly for a position like the Town Council, where you really are trying to get as broad a group as possible for a very specific type of professional person, I think that this is a really good approach to take. So it's fabulous that someone has helped us expand our network tenfold. I think there's still a lot of work to be doing in establishing networks one-on-one like we have been doing, but I feel like this has just flung us forward with a lot of work by Rebecca, but it will hopefully be easy to upkeep. And like Lloyd said, it is a living, breathing document that we expect to be changing over time. So, that's it.
Questions, obviously? Please, please come forward.
I should actually comment on the Human Relations Commission actually was part of this process, too. I don't want to leave them out because they're a very important part of it. We did run it by them, and they actually gave us some candidates or people to put on a listserv. So it's really important, and I just want to thank them for their efforts on this as well.
Oh, very good. Thank you. Slakman-Daly?
Yeah, more of a comment. I'm very pleased to see you launched this effort, and thank you, Rebecca, and I want to say, Mr. Kleckner, I'd like to keep Rebecca. But I, and I did put it on the agenda tomorrow night for the Selectments Diversity and Equal Opportunity and Affirmative Action Committee to take a look at it, because we actually had a very interesting discussion one night by Grace Lee, one of the committee members, and I think unfortunately, maybe neither of you were able to be there that night. This was a while ago. But she has actually done a lot of this work in various positions she had, and I thought one of her, one of her interesting ideas was, it's not geared toward those top-of-the-department jobs, but she was very, suggested strongly that we consider some internship programs for maybe underprivileged teenagers or whatever, and that, you know, you begin to develop a pool that comes into your, you know, later thinks of coming into your workforce, and, you know, as we have seen historically, Brookline likes to promote from within, so you need to have people at all levels, you know, with diversity, so that, you know, they can move up that ladder. And that's one idea I'd love to see referenced in here.
I'm smiling because we're on the same page here. Actually, Rebecca actually has helped us develop a sort of a protocol that'll do outreach to actually folks in the MECO program, as well as steps to success. I think it's a, and in particular, maybe focusing on the department heads actually visiting these groups every now and then to tell them about their department, as well as letting them know what career choices are involved with that, too. So, yeah, we're on the same page with that.
Right. And she was saying, I mean, even if those people don't come to work for the town, they go out and say, hey, I had a great experience, you know, in the town of Brookline. So, yeah. And she had, she had some other ideas, so I think we'll have some more suggestions for you after we take a look at it.
Okay. Slakman-Washinsky?
A mechanical question. You know, part of getting this to work is creation and maintenance of a listserv. And there's a lot of email addresses on here, and that's great, but it's, that's got to be living, too, because people move on, organizations change, new organizations. So what processes, procedures do you have in place to deal with bounces, changes in email address, keeping this thing current?
Interns, interns, interns.
Rebecca, 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 I can see her.
Yeah, we're aware of that, too. And like you said, it's a living document, and when things change, we'll add. And if we get bounce backs, we'll deal with that, too. If we have to make phone calls to see if it's still an active site or not, we'll do that.
Yes, Slakman-Binka?
Yeah, I actually was following up on that question. There are about two, about a page and a half to two pages of GLBTQ organizations, almost all with email addresses, and about a half a page of African-American organizations' information, not with email addresses, with one exception. And, you know, obviously, at this point, so much of the dissemination of information is by email, and if it goes in hard, even if it goes in hard copy to a recipient, that becomes very difficult for that recipient to further distribute to his or her email list. And I'm, question number one is, are we working on filling in email addresses so that information really can get out to all of the organizations here and to all of their members or their email lists easily? And so that's question number one. It kind of surprised me that, you know, there was that gap here.
Yeah, I noticed that, too, but I think if you look back in the religious organization information, and you will find that a number of those are, and maybe Rebecca or whoever put this list together can answer that, but I believe a number of the religious organizations are probably associated with the African-American community. And in fact, at that same meeting I'm referencing before, Grace Lee mentioned that when she is recruiting, she has had some churches in the African-American community that she would reach out to, to get those job postings more widely out there. So I think, I guess that, I guess that's a kind of recognized way to do it.
So can I, can I just make a comment on that? So we can only, you know, work with the information we have.
Yeah.
And, and part, and because we're going to be using this document on a regular basis, we will be getting bounce backs. Currently, we're sending out cards that ask people when they apply, you know, where do they hear from this? That will become automated when we have our applicant tracking software up and going. So that's just another way of tracking, you know, are we primarily drawing from here and not there, and those type of analysis. But also, this is another part, another level of networking, that if we don't have good contact information, this is something that we should continue to reach out to these organizations.
Right.
And it's not a bad thing if we start getting bounce backs and we're reaching out and connecting with these individuals. I think that there's every effort going to be made to keep this document up to date and as current and successful as possible.
No, I, it's, Slakman-Daly, I completely agree with you. You know, the the religious organizations, you know, Columbus Avenue, African Methodist Episcopal Zion Church, the Ebenezer Baptist Church, and so forth. But again, many of those do not have email addresses. And my only, just a suggestion is that so much communication is by email nowadays, that it would probably be, as this list gets developed, worth a call to these-
Right, yes.
And say, what's the best email? And we follow through on that.
Yeah, no, I think it's important to get those email addresses. But interestingly, Grace also said at that meeting that when she is looking to fill a position, she has a certain number of people that she actually picks up the phone and calls, and, you know, some people that she knows might make an effort to find some good candidates. And so, being something of a Luddite myself, I was happy to hear that some people still use the phone.
The other comment in that regard is, I note that under the GLBTQ organizations, there are a couple of student organizations, UMass and Northeastern. I would assume that there are similar organizations at our local universities for other minority candidates that would, should be on this list as it gets developed.
Yeah, we agree.
Other comments, questions?
I have a question, and I'm guessing it's Ms. DeBeau who's going to answer this for me. It would be helpful, I think, for all of us to hear something about what I'm going to call the constraints on municipal hiring that come about from civil service, from collective bargaining agreements. In other words, there are, in public safety, you wouldn't be able even to use this list, correct?
And for police and fire.
That's public safety, police and fire, right.
Police officers and firefighters. But we have a lot of civilians who work, particularly in the police department, and we've had a lot of success of getting employees at, in different levels to come up through the department into the police ranks. I mean, I think that we have a number of dispatchers and meter collection folks who are going through the process and are on the next test. So I think we have to really look at it broadly. Yes, there are civil service exams for the police and the fire, and they have residency preferences. That is primarily the limitation, though, and we really try to take advantage of the fact that we are no longer covered by civil service.
Well, for the non-public safety, I was just really asking you to give, and fine, you should elaborate on that. I really wanted to hear where it is that there are restrictions on how much outreach we can do. And I do understand that under civil service, we are very limited.
For police and fire, which is the only civil service positions we have anymore.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think there, well, first, one thing, we do give the veterans preference for police and fire, and that has actually been a great source of more diverse candidates coming in in recent years, which has been helpful. But I also think that, you know, maybe it would not be a bad thing to somehow get this information out more to people that they need to go take that exam, if they want to be even considered, because I think that's one of the problems. That's why we've had this whole situation where, you know, it's been family members of other people going to take that exam, because people don't realize you have to go take that exam, and you have to get into this civil service process if you want one of those jobs.
Yes. So that's why the police chief took that article to town meeting, which got passed and which the state, you know, refused to allow us to enact.
Which the article was to give the preference to Brookline High School graduates. That would include MECO students and others.
Right.
Right?
That's not the way I would frame it, but yes, that would be the effect. There are a lot of other, yes. And the chief, the chief of police did an incredible amount of recruiting in the community and at the police department. He was at Brookline Day. So I really think that the department is trying to get that, people to apply. They also work very closely with employees or people who are interested, and it includes minority applicants as well, that if they want to move in, you know, they actually put individuals together, or students that they know want to come, put them together and say, you know, look for this type of housing, and here's a roommate, here's somebody else who's interested. So they do a lot of work, and I think that if you look at the classes that have come through, you'll see the result of that.
All I wanted to do was point out that there are some areas where we have less ability to do the kind of outreach that we would like to do.
That's true. I agree with you, but I think that there's more that we can still do, and we are continuing to work in those areas.
Good. Mr. Kleckner, you-
No, I'm good now.
Okay. Question for whom?
The presenters, you.
You have to come forward. I don't think we're here to interrogate the presenters, though, just to be clear.
I'm just asking questions. Does the blueprint cover diversity in the interview committees?
Yes, the answer is. Says so. Don't you have a copy?
I don't have a copy.
I'm sorry. We'll get you one.
Excellent. Thank you. And the next question is, the software for Human Resources had been talked about for at least three or four years, and I just heard that it may be coming, and I'd like to ask when, if so.
The information, the Human Resources Information System that you're talking about was a different type of software, and we are currently implementing a new payroll system that has an applicant tracking component. So once we can get our employees paid with this new system, we will be doing the applicant tracking, which we anticipate will probably be around March. And that's because we knew there was going to be this delay, that's why we started using these updated cards that we've been using.
But I should say, and Sandra, I think you may have found this, too, that I myself have spoken to some people who are employees, and they feel that they do not want to identify themselves as a minority, a protected class. They feel, I've spoken to several people who've said, you know, I got my job on the merits. I don't want to be putting myself down on any records in some kind of category like that, because I feel like I'm qualified for the job, and I shouldn't have to say that. So that's what I have found talking to some people, so I'm-
And there's a huge generational effect. At the end of the day, we have to collect this data for EEO purposes. We have to, every other year, submit numbers. We are trying to look at race, diversity, and inclusion in a much more dynamic way than just numbers. And again, there is an enormous, there is an enormous generational effect as to who am I? We could talk about this for hours. But at the end of the day, it is helpful to collect that information as to where people are applying from, what sources they're using, so that we can make sure that we're hitting the largest possible swath of people that we can.
Right. But I'm just saying that even at the end of the day, if people don't want to put themselves down in certain categories, that data may not be completely accurate.
I can guarantee the, the data is not accurate, and the law allows people to divulge that information or not. So we can't compel that information. It is not accurate. It is a guideline only.
Okay. Any more?
Nope.
No, I just want to say thank you, and thank you to Rebecca for such a wonderful job. It's a good, great start, and, you know, I hope we'll have some helpful suggestions for you to, you know, and I'm sure as time goes on, you'll be, you know, fleshing this out even more.
Yes. Well, thank you.
Right. And we look forward to hearing about the next version. Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks very much. And I believe that's the last item on our calendar, so this concludes the meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Tuesday, December 3rd.